Yes, sir. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I'll ask Mr. Posey to give a prayer and I'll let you pledge.
Pray with me. Dear Almighty Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the many blessings you've given us in our lives. I pray that you would watch over us and keep us safe and be with us in court today just to make the best decisions. And thank you for the people of this county and thank you for everything you've done for us. We will serve you as saints, amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is stand One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item B, public comments. I don't have anyone signed up for public comments. We'll go into consent agenda, senior systems, Amelia. Please not here. It's Dixon.
Everything's going good. We got all the entries done last month. We also had a good show. We had a Lee Raspberry dessert with his dish and then her sister Hattie with Fitz. We have five teams going to do food challenge next month, but other than that, everything roll along.
Thank you, sir. Trey reporting, Ms. Parks.
Yes, sir. After recognition, we ended with eight, nine, five hundred thousand, seven, sixty-seven, eighty-five. That's with interest earned at a total of twenty-five thousand, nine sixty-eight, oh four. That's earning four point oh one on the money market camp and three point six six on all the others. So we took a pretty good drop there of almost point one five and that's all I have.
Thank you. Kenny Auditor, Ms. Mullen.
Uh, yes, the commissioner should have received the invoice file this year. We had a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars worth of bills. Something is bill being paid to the appraisal district to collect our taxes. Are there any questions on the bills? I'll have Judge.
All right, thank you. Law enforcement, Sheriff Dixon.
Yes, sir. Uh, we currently have thirteen house and jail camps. Uh, we've made three arrests and thirty-two thefts since the last court meeting. And of course, cause of last month because of the bomb. Trying to get our bill report out straight now, but uh, we've been busy with that civil stand by as we serve civil paper. Where people are.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'm taking a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The motion, second, Mr. Posey, all in favor? You know, Mr. Motion carries new business conflict of interest, Ms. Mullen.
Can you make a change? I have none.
Budget amendment, light untransferred, Ms. Mullen.
None, it's fine.
All right, item number four, burn ban for closure of the court. It was lifted a couple of weeks before court. Just leave it off or you want to put it down?
It's still pretty dry out there. I mean, it's weird that we wouldn't have no problem so far, but we're. I'd say we put it on if we we get wet enough, we you can remember it outside the court. But we'd have to have courts, but then so we'll set it on for now and see what's going with the drink.
I'll make the motion, real state of Birmingham. Down a second. Mr. Posey, all in favor? Ms. Motion carries. All right, item number five, thank you, Randy, Ms. Mullen.
We have none, Ms. Mullen, Judge.
Okay, I'm room six, prove subdivision plan for section twenty-three, block two, Mr. Hellrod.
Well, that's all y'all.
I think the commissioners.
Hey, what it was, it's in my precinct, this Flores's or.
Yeah, Flores's, they're dividing the property between the family members and anytime you're dividing property uh, into more than two or three tracks uh, and they're less than ten acres, it requires a subdivision plan to be filed and reported in the courthouse for since it's it's land, y'all, it's greasy and it's going to affect rightways uh, along the county roads because they don't have established rightaway reported already. And this is going to establish that right away with uh, for their portion of the property. Uh, it requires y'all's approval and because those tracks can be determined to be will track and require requiring utilities if they're ever settled. So y'all need to be aware of it in case y'all have to run water, more electricity, stuff like that.
It's on County Road four seventeen, right there, seven one eighty. They're kind of closer to County Road four oh two on the east side of the four seventeen. It really doesn't affect anything majorly. There's already water lines and fiber optic lines that run down it.
It's not necessarily going to affect these things. It's just so they can partition between the family members.
So I make a motion to approve it.
I'm all second.
Motion, Mr. Evans, second. By Gordon, all in favor? You now, Ms. Motion carries. Item number seven, approve us resolution for joint primary election, Jessica.
It's just so that we can hold the Democrat Republican parties on the same ballot. And I have it right here, I'll bring it around, bring it over to it after quarter.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Evans, second, Mr. Posey, all in favor? Ms. Motion carries. Item number eight, discuss and approve depopulation or closure of the Fisher County Jail. Anybody? Sheriff, please.
Well, um, just basically to put the definition on it from the text, uh, fiction jail commission. Uh, depopulated and defunded is one thing. Still needs to maintain certain items for compliance with them. Does still require the annual inspection and about five different things that go into maintaining that compliance. If you uh, decommission the jail, that takes it off the roster. Uh, they no longer have anything to do with it. There would be nobody spent on uh, maintaining those checks for compliance. Uh, it's in each U statement on that. Basically says that if we uh, decommission it, goes off the rolls. There's nothing that needs to be spent on it. Uh, no reporting needs to be done through the jail commission on the building. But if we were compliant and they wanted to reopen the jail, we would have to do it quickly. You know, we would have to staff it and then we could open it because the building is already compliant. Uh, if we allow it to remain in non-compliant status and decommission the jails and at later date someone wants to reopen the jail, then Texas jail commission will look at it as if it's a new construction. So everything has to be working, has to be state of the art, it's got to be a speedable thing. Which could take for a delay time opening the jail and quite a bit of maintenance. Uh, I believe uh, when Sam Goldsmith was here a couple of months ago, he was talking about the camera system needs to be updated. I like to, uh, he told me, he said that with the uh, move toward high definition and everything else, he said, basically y'all have the VCR. Now, I believe he quoted something about uh, about having about having a five hundred K of a camera system. If we were compliant, we wouldn't have to do that right away eventually. Um, but if decommissioned or to reopen, it's got to be done before they before they can reopen. So just for your consideration, I'm not trying to sway either side, just letting you know what you're looking at. If it's completely decommissioned, then the jail commission is notified and it's taken off the roster, so.
So right now we're considered depopulated versus decommissioned?
Yes.
So when we defund it, it was just depopulated? For Jessica.
Yes, and just so that everyone knows, on November the sixth, Sheriff and I were summoned to Austin, Texas to explain this.
For compliance?
For compliance, because we were still not in compliance, but we had to just by not funding it, did not close the jail, which gets their eyes on us, so.
So we can.
I told the board.
Decommission and with a minimum expense to potentially put money in. Or we can either decommission, we have vacant vacant building, correct? Pretty much.
Yeah, you just, you know, everything they dispatched, that's where things at. So it's not, you know.
I know in your letter, you talked about some financing on that as far as if with the two scenarios, if you decommission versus depopulation on the expense, course and all that. Because our biggest, our biggest problem we ran into with the jail was we weren't managing, the jail wasn't being managed properly. And it was.
Thirty-two.
It was hemorrhaging bones constantly that the county had to hemorrhage. Um, and some of that been going on from the time the jail set up to start with, yeah. Our biggest thing to me, if we were to decommission it, then we really don't need a building for that, for the, we'd have to potentially sell the building.
How so?
Well, why would we need a building that size for the sheriff's department to operate at a point? We've got a jail on one side and the sheriff's department on the other and you got dispatching to where anybody coming in wanting to buy a building is not going to want us, not want a joint building.
I got you, I wouldn't.
That's true. So my big thing on that, for me, maybe we don't decommission it right now, we just keep it depopulated and keep the bare minimum to keep it in compliance.
Right.
To potentially, because the county did vote this in.
Yes, yeah, and basically in order for us to get back into compliance, I'd like to hold the health inspector from the safety kitchen. Fire marshal has to do his inspection, has to have the ample hood and kitchen properly cleaned and taxed, which the fire marshal requires a lot of the jail commission. There has to be a tag and fix to it, say filters were cleaned. And that the plug down the hood all the way from the kitchen area where the primary fixture is all the way out through the building. Off the, it was always, it's all properly.
Can any of the SB twenty-two money be put towards anything on the jail?
Not that I'm aware of on that.
Not if it's not, if you're not that populated.
It just depopulated.
Just for argument's sake, with the jail getting.
It's not for building runs, it's primary, I don't know vehicles.
So.
And eventually they're going to make us put the cameras back?
Not initially, because right now everything works.
And as soon as one of them quits, there's five hundred thousand dollars right there.
Well, basically what it is uh, is with the with the current setup uh, the jail commission is not even looking at, all right, at the, just to be compliant. So like I said, fire marshal, health inspector, uh, the even our fire panel operational, the fire manual is respected. Uh, and our fire ball is kept up and that's great. Uh, the greatest expense we've done from uh, having the answer booth contracted to be cleaned properly, so there has to be a tag and fix to it for the fire. And they're certainly not.
Even if you're not using it?
Even if we're not using, because they will certify clean until they have someone come in as a certified agency, which the closest one and one known county uses is where it all last messes, had a big spring. So they do the only county jail. Um, they would do hours, they, and because none of us know anything about that, uh, just to have it certified clean, but nothing to do with the filters, about seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, pull the filters out and put certified clean filters in there, uh, it's about one hundred and seventy hundred and forty-five dollars per year. So that would be an initial outlay.
So why aren't we having trouble being in compliance even though we do not have any inmates? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the big problem is that when the jail was depopulated and personnel left, no one ever said anything about, hey, you got this coming up or this is what you need to maintain. So when the jail commission showed up, our health inspection for the kitchen had already expired. Didn't have a current fire marshal's inspection. Um, for the fire panels when they had inspected it, there's actually two panels in the building. One that's supposed to get it in dispatch, it's got the map of rooms and everything else. And they were putting a tag inside saying that it, you know, it passed inspection. There is a master panels in the IT room that was in the saddleport. It was not tagged, so we got hit for that. We got hit for no fire marshal, we got hit for no uh, health inspection. Uh, but our fire ball is good, answer hood, jail commission requires it to be inspected every six months. Fire marshal said it's good for a year. So that's another difference between what jail commission wants that and what fire marshal needs. Uh, it's about two hundred dollars to do the answer hood. Every six months. Even if you're not using it, even if we're not.
Wanting to go.
Your claim, not compliant to them on that part to get fined for? No, there's no fines associated with it. You just remain in a non-compliant status and in program then they're going to ask you for progress, so you know, where are you going to get back into compliance?
If you're not using it, there should be no cost in keeping it maintained, right?
Well, you're going to.
There's going to be. You got to pay somebody out there to come and look at it?
Yeah, because you know, and all that, that would be an annual cost.
But they don't have to change anything.
No.
That sounds a little love shared, I'm sorry, the two hundred dollars comes low because every bill I get from the L E C is not two hundred dollars. I don't know if you have a total on all that, but I think it's well more than than that.
Well, like, like I said, those are just those specific items. Health inspector, each of those charged in, where everyone, two hundred dollars each, they're inspectable.
I think they charge to travel. I think the bill's never been lower than fifteen hundred dollars that I know of. I mean.
Well, that's, that wasn't what we.
Yeah.
Uh, once the, once the fire marshal signs off, health inspector signs off, the uh, answer hood gets gets done, then, you know, barring any repairs, no smoke alarms, you know, burnout or something like that, takes a fire panel, that's about eleven hundred dollar cost. If they drive and that's come here, worse. With uh, barring any of that, you can probably, you would be out roughly five thousand dollars.
And the cameras are not an issue until unless you decide to reopen, is that correct?
Correct.
Unless you decide to reopen it.
Well, at that point, if we, if we're compliant, we can reopen the jail and operate, build next inspection at which point they may say, okay, you need.
But to be in compliance, you got to have all these jailers, dispatchers?
No.
You're telling me we can hold prisoners over there with six dispatchers and three deputies?
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the building would be compliant with the general.
The building. We had to have the building compliant and not compliance personnel.
Yes.
That's what you're asking. But the whole prisoners, you got to have the full staff.
Correct. And, you know, we could operate on a skeleton crew for a short period of time until we hired and break. Now, power law, that'd take honestly good day.
Because we're having problems just keeping with dispatchers. We finally got a full crew now?
Yes, sir.
But to open it, you got to have plus that and they got to be certified both ways. They got to be a jailer dispatcher because it'd be a very, go ahead and tell me, Robert, I mean, I don't understand.
If I could.
You can't. Come on up.
This court, uh, you don't have to have jail dispatchers. You can have dispatchers and you can have jailers. The way that the jail is set up over there, there is uh, the control room, which, you know, you really can't have, you really cannot have your dispatcher leave that area, uh, because we don't have a portal stone for them to be able to go and check on on inmates, because jail commission requires that there is a inmate check one, once every hour. Now, that's saying that you don't have anybody that's, you know, on suicide watch where there is a, a fifteen minute or thirty minute watch. Then that pulls that dispatcher away from, from the console, um, which, you know, can be detrimental to, to the officers out on the street. Uh, jail commission requires right now, one, one, one jailer to every forty-eight inmates. That, that is the, the ratio. So you don't have to have a full staff of six or seven jailers to be able to operate the jail with inmates. Because I don't even know, I don't, I don't know why I'm not, how many do you hold? But I don't believe it's more than forty-eight. We're only at twenty-four, but so. So, and, and that, so that, that's the ratio from jailer to, to inmate is one to forty-eight. So, so, you know, when, when the sheriff was talking about running a skeleton group, you know, of course, you know, you can't have, you know, just two jailers. And you have to have, you know, three or four. Um, and, you know, in, in my previous experience working, having, having worked at a jail, um, you know, it, it was, it, it's not a hard thing to do, okay? Um, having, having the right personnel in place and, and having accountability. Um, because the way that the sheriff was talking about, the inspection comes every, every year. So as long as you're, as you are not decommissioned, um, you're going to have an inspection every single year. Whether, whether you have inmates or not, you're going to have an inspection. So, you know, stuff that's not being used, you know, and if, um, you know, with the answer hood or whatever the case may be, that stuff is going to have to be inspected even though it wasn't used for a whole year. Um, so, you know, as, as you were saying, we don't, there's not, you don't have to have a full staff before you can run the jail. Uh, a lot of that falls on having a jail administrator who is knowledgeable, um, who knows, you know, what, what things are in place for the jail. Um, and also having a jail administrator that is a jailer. Um, most, most officers, they tend to have their jailer's license when they come out of academy, when they go work in the sheriff's office, um, because they are put in the jail before they are put out on the streets. So if you have three officers and they each have their jailer's license, that's three jailers right there. Um, and then if you have a, a dispatcher who also happens to have a jailer's license, now you have a person that can work dispatch and can work with the jails. The sheriff is the chief jailer for the county. And I am licensed. And he also is a certified jailer. Um, they don't have to have their, they, they can apply for a temporary, the jail administrator can apply for a temporary jailer's license while they're getting their, while they're getting their jailer's license, which allows them to be able to work out on the floor while they're doing their.
Biggest question that pan right now is decommissioning versus depopulation on the buildings.
Exactly.
It's not about reopening or anything about that.
No, it's nothing to do with that, it's just, do you want it off the jail commission rolls, which then stops everything. But if you ever do want to decide to reopen the jail, it could be a good bit of money as a delay in time. If we were compliant, you could operate, you know, that's certainly possible.
Can I, can I speak on that just a little bit? And just as perspective of the money that comes out for that law enforcement center? Um, we've had, we've been paying on that for ten years. We've been open maybe six months, one time. Uh, the problem is not, the problem is the population here. It's the, that we don't have the population to staff the jail. And we never can keep it running because there's not staff, there's not enough people to keep it running. We've been through six sheriffs, we've had no administration, there's a, there's a breakdown there. Um, I'm all about the jail, I'm all about the deputies. I, you know, the money spent for deputies, we only have three deputies. And to me, we should be spending that money to get more deputies on the street. We, for some reason, ten years shows us that we can't open, we can't have that jail running because we don't have the population.
Yeah, I saw that, so.
I, I'm just giving you that, that there's always something. Yeah, I, I, I feel like it's probably more than five thousand dollars. I don't know, we'd have to get the numbers on what it really costs to just have it in compliance, but it seems like to me there's always something. We paid for a jail check thing for people to, that they didn't have to leave their thing, that was on a computer. I think it was life check or something. There's been a lot of money thrown over there.
Yeah, in, in the past, it's definitely a huge amount of waste.
Yeah.
But back to item number eight, this has nothing to do with opening the jail or closing the jail. All this has to do is y'all want to keep it depopulated, we're going to have to give you money to go through the inspections, that's all it is. They can't open the jail till the court funds it anyway. Right, so we're getting.
We're getting off subject.
Yes.
If we're de- if we're decommissioned, do we have, are we opening up a new dispatch office?
Not for my knowledge.
If you're, if you're de- if you're depopulating or decommissioning, you're shutting off the jail part of the dispatch and the front offices.
It'll be, it'll be open.
Sheriff's department will still be open.
But if you ever sold that building, then you would have to, right?
Yes, yes.
Because like you said, if nobody would want to buy.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Does this decision have to be made today? Do we have to give the state the answer today? And why, the reason I'm asking this is, we're throwing out numbers, imaginary numbers right now.
Right, because, yeah, go ahead.
We're not supposed to work on imaginary numbers.
We do not have, today, I did tell the state after this court meeting, we would let them know, but I'm sure we can send them a letter saying we haven't signed it yet, but still leaves us under their purview, we're still under their inspection.
How long until the next inspection?
Next year.
So we have till basically next year? Not really.
No, no, we need to let the state know something. I think we're fine with table, I'll be glad to send them a letter from our office.
What, what I'm getting at is with this, you've got election coming up, so you potentially get somebody coming in. Can they put a viable plan together to actually show how to do it? Because it's been the downfall this whole time with the jail, it's been a viable plan to operate it financially because we don't have the population. And it's been mismanaged the whole time. But besides that, if we decommission it, we're looking at potentially a lot more money to bring it back in. Nobody's going to want to rent a building that half of the building is taken up with the other and the other half's that way. So what I'm looking at here is, what's the plan y'all want for the law enforcement center? Because do y'all want to try to make a jail work? Can you show us a plan that actually puts a jail there to make it work? Or do we need to truly just close the building, pull y'all out of it, open a new building? Because y'all don't need to be in a half building to where we have the potential to sell the building.
Yeah, we can certainly put hard numbers together.
I would like to see hard numbers. I've seen them for ten years and nobody's proved it to me. I'm totally against leaving it open. That's my feeling.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not going to.
It's a money pit.
For one, one way or the other, I just let you know, if decom, it's off the rolls, you don't have to do nothing. But if they, if they, if someone, you know, get the people where and they wanted to reopen the jail, then you're talking delays and potentially a lot. So that's really, that's really arguably.
It would be a delay right now if you wanted to open it tomorrow. Well, so the delay don't affect us, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a big delay anyway, look at it. So somebody quits and then there you are again, that's not worth, you can't even keep deputies, you only have no deputies.
Well.
We got a place for two more deputies and no deputies.
You know, like I said, I'm not advocating one way or the other for the jail, it's up to you to decide. Uh, you know, so we either just hang off the roads, or maybe we're about to jail commission.
And that's basically all we're asking, you want the jail commission to do inspections or not?
Yeah. But in order for us to pass inspection, we have to.
Right.
I don't see it opening back up, but I can't base it off of the V S numbers either.
But you got ten years, you've got ten years of proof that it don't work.
We've got six sheriffs and ten years. And through that timeframe, now it has not worked.
Not even a year. That should answer anybody's question.
But that brings about the next problem to the scenario, or the scenario we're dealing with right now. Do we decommission the building and have half of it in use that we can't sell?
I know, last time I said, we're paying twenty-five thousand a year in utility, just in utilities. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
But that's where I'm going with this, why would you decommission a building until you have a viable plan with what you're doing? That's what I'm getting. To me, it doesn't make sense for us to decommission a building until we have a viable plan with what we're gonna do with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, the, the main thing is dispatch, because you're gonna have to have a facility where you can have all your nine-one-one, all your radios, all your I D setup. It will have to have a personal generators, all that stuff, which we currently have. But if you wanted to sell that building, you would have to build one that at least makes dispatch compliant and then you could operate as far as sheriff's office.
Because honestly, what, what, what if we table it? And then we come back with a proposal for keeping it open, a proposal for a, a new building or a new structure to a dispatch? And a proposal, how long we have, how much do we have to pay?
My question is this.
Russell.
Gordon, you were there. My question is, what's, what would we have to do to the old sheriff's department that we're not running a jail? What would we have to do to the old sheriff's department to make it live?
But I'm not sure it's big enough. But we have a lot across the building, just be cleaned up, it's plenty big, make a nice spot.
Well, if we're just running, if we're just running the sheriff's department, not a jail, why, because my understanding, when they put everything out, because I wasn't in office then, the reason we didn't stay in the old sheriff's department was because of the jail in the sheriff's department, wasn't up to state standards.
Trying to keep the jail open, that's why we built the new facility. We wasn't.
Could we put a little money into this building and potentially bring them back over, is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, we can. We won't have a jail.
Well, we're not gonna have a jail if we decommission anyway, so. Then we can put a building up and not have it hemorrhaging on the county for no use.
Is a jail and a holding facility the same thing?
That we know.
Because you have to have someplace to hold them, right?
No, 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 we take them straight to Hanson.
Oh, they do them here because D P S has their, uh, uh, I D machine, which does all fingerprinting, you know, it's all paperwork, it's booked into those. So we bring them here, get a fingerprint, get a process, gather their paperwork, down to the Jones County, and then they book them there. And, uh, and then, of course, when they need to come back to Fisher County for, we have to get them there. But, you know, we don't, we don't have to have a jail facility to operate the sheriff's department. Because we can, if, say for example, we broke a smaller facility for dispatch, we can keep the I D machine and everything there. And, you know, basically, we've operated as we are, just without that, that tick.
Half the money might spend on cameras eventually.
That's, that's what.
That's just cameras.
Yeah.
Just cameras, just a little man, just, just that part.
If I could just speak on the, the camera situation, uh, and that's just going for sample. Right, you know, he's the one that said five hundred thousand dollars. Um, like I said, previous experience, new camera system put in a, in a jail, wasn't near that much. So, you know, i- i- it's one of those things that, that, you know, we, we, you know, we're looking for the best deal, but we also look for the best price. You know, because those, most, most, uh, you know, do jail commission, jail, uh, inmate complaints or inmate lawsuits are, are one of the biggest in, in the country in Texas jails. Um, now, so I'm, you know, that, that, the sheriff mentioned that, that's what I said. That, that I would, you know, I'd be, I'd be willing that there are other companies that won't charge near that much money. So you guys are near half a million dollars.
Right.
I want to say again, guys, I think we're, I don't think anybody understands, all we need to decide, do we want to try staying compliant or not? That's all it is, because they can't open the jail even if we do it, they have to come back for funding, which is gonna be another six or seven hundred thousand dollars, which is next month of year.
Right.
And I'm happy to table it and send the letter to the jail commission, but I think we're getting away out of hand, we're talking about numbers that don't even exist. So y'all can table it or vote to give anybody.
There's no need to table it.
Do I?
There's no use of table then, I'm gonna take a motion to decommission it. And that's how I feel about it. It's just a money pit, it costs way too much to keep going. So I make the motion, I make y'all.
I have a motion for decommission, do I have a second? Second. Have a second, Mr. Elrod, all in favor, closing jail permanently, raise your hands please. One, two, three, four. Mr. Evans again?
I'm not for it, I want to see a friend.
Motion carried, three to one. Decommissions. All right, information only, sexual assault report from district attorney, I have those numbers here. Uh, sexual assault victims worked from September twenty twenty-three to August of twenty twenty-five. Nolan County was twenty-one, Mitchell County fifteen, and Fisher County seven. All right, information only report with Peters. Texas Communications, Tori Smith and Dan Gerard, y'all here?
Yes, sir. So, um, I have to go over the options, we had our engineer Dan come down, he said make this day, so any of the, uh, more technical questions, I'll need to address with him. But, uh, we have two options essentially, the first option is to, um, put a new repeater in the existing site. To do that, you would have to be, um, repaired essentially, it has to have a high controlled room for the repeater system, uh, but everything else would be, would be fine. Um, again, that would incur the cost of having a new repeater, uh, and then the installation of a repeater. The second option would be to use a five hundred foot tower within the area that, um, if we did a population study, maybe an option to, uh, actually move the existing repeater that we have here in Roby over to us. And, uh, that may address the issue with one repeater for the entire county. Um, the only, the upfront cost for that are gonna be a lot lower than adding a brand new repeater. However, there would be, uh, the recurring cost of tower rental, which that would, that can range anywhere from a couple hundred dollars to, you know, four or five hundred dollars. So, um, really, those are the two options right now, is just adding an additional repeater at the existing site while doing the repairs necessary to get that working. Or moving, uh, doing the study to see if this new repeater will do everything it needs for the entire county.
Any questions?
Because we've got a five hundred foot tower here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a water tower.
Yeah, and that's something again, we have to, the first thing we would need to do is do a population study to see if the signal would, uh, envelope the entire area, that's five hundred dollars to do the actual study for that. Um, after talking to management here, we seem to feel like there's a pretty good chance being that high that it will work. Um, and then of course, the cost of moving the existing repeater to that tower. So I would say that, you know, if you're looking at the, the most cost effective option, that's going to be it. The only issue with that is the recurring monthly tower loss, uh, tower.
In that tower, water tower? We're on top of water towers.
Yeah. And, uh, the issue with the water tower in general is that you're gonna get, get a lot of signal loss, there's a lot of interference. And it's a water tower and we've had an issue before where, you know, water and electronics so fast.
Is the tower, what, roof channel out there, case of the cemetery, is it still working with that or just separate thing?
Well, that particular repeater heading down for a long time, it's right now it's currently operating. Uh, one of the reasons that we had asked for this, I had to check is because especially in the, the northeastern part of the county, uh, it was hard to communicate between over you and the, and bro. Danny come down and he checked, you know, basically the health that you were over the signal from the repeater to the antenna on the other side, where it comes out of the antenna, and basically, we were good as far as that goes. Um, but now that's, that Fisher one, which is one that had been down for a long time, Fisher one is currently operating. And that's all the ones that's in right now. So, we have, have not had an opportunity to drive out and check and try to communicate with over Fisher one yet. Uh, but we were gonna do that here very quickly. And you'll see.
My last time I had curls was at that over there. That over there, I used to cemetery, roof channel was the one that actually slid, reached out there, roof breach back then.
So, like I said, we, we've all, we found all this out this, through the last few days, as far as getting that actually operating. And, no, we just had an opportunity to drive out there and check, but we will be doing that very, very shortly.
Any other questions? All right, item number eleven, information only, village for precinct, Mr. Evans?
My, we've already picked up our lot in Texas for the, uh, years.
Okay, item number twelve, livestock association asking for help, uh, pre-made restrooms assistance with septic, Mr. Dixon?
Show me to get on the agenda earlier, but, uh, we purchased two, uh, pre-made restrooms for the show line. That total came to eight thousand dollars, we were just kinda curious, you helped kind of reimburse and help us with that septic? I'm gonna talk to you about it, you can help us put it in, but, uh.
You can tie it in to the one that's there.
It is, we could tie it in there, you know where it's at?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all we're kinda asking, it's kinda help reimburse some of that or kinda help us get this hooked up to that septic.
There's not a bathroom, Robert.
There's not a bathroom.
Now that I think about it, I don't think it is there, because y'all extended it on the top of it, so we had to, we had to take it out right.
Yeah.
So there's not one there.
No.
So I'm sorry, I lied to you.
I don't think there's any city line sewage runs that far back.
More of the paint building was, there was sewer line, it was there, right?
Heard the paint building, yes, yeah, but it, it would probably cost you more to run down to there than it would to do something else.
And that's all we were asking, if there was any way to kinda help.
Obviously.
Figure out what it costs on a septic system.
Do you have an idea, Gordon, Russell? I mean, yeah, we know, I have to do the numbers, the people that goes do their, that's the way they do them. Okay, you want to table?
For the county show lines?
Yeah.
Table it until we have a, a price on it?
Does, does the, does those, those bathrooms I purchased, do they have a holding tape right now? So it's all this script, we got the. Yeah, I need to look at it to kinda figure out what's going on. Before I give you a number, I can give you a number, but you might.
Okay.
Make a motion to the table until we have the amount on it.
But yes, I will help you. Second, uh, Mr. Elrod, I'm a favor table now. Motion carries. That's all I have, gentlemen. You need that by January. You guys want to stop showing.
I'm all sorry, wait, I went to sure we.